Hey my boys, okay this meeting was at um June, June twenty third, June twenty eighth uh twenty twenty-three, um City, City of Westminster, um this is what um
Our next speaker is Tina with Caideau on deck. I made some flyers again for you and flags for month of July. How good, my name is Tina, I'm a mother of three boys, I used to be Anderson's Elementary School PTA president for four years. What I saw was a lot of horrible things that these teachers were doing behind parents' back. I knew I had to start trying to help out my students better for my children. My children's father was born and raised in Westminster, I myself is from Long Beach. And my dad made sure I was proud to wherever I came from, from above and from the bottom and uh and above. All, someone's always watching, who else is gonna do it? I used my gift as being a medium and a psychic, but I never told anyone because I had a hidden agenda myself. One that I kept close to my heart and one that no one can take away from me.
Shaman.
My four offsprings were a gift to me from my ancestors. Shame on you, shame on the Westminster, the City of Westminster for using me and abusing me for not only and not only as a mother, but as a child. This is one job you will not take away from me, mark my words, you will pay big in this life and then the next life.
Mm-hmm.
Let's talk about mental health, I'm free after family court because my babies were kidnapped. I haven't seen my own children, my babies, my kids, my offsprings. In two years, two years I have not seen them. This is one mama bear, you're not gonna stop, I'm not gonna stop. To everyone in the Westminster, the City of Westminster, the whole world, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna show everybody what you have done to me. Project Rose, children's lives matter, these teachers and principals all need to look up to be locked up with the city leaders, human sex trafficking is real and not a joke. These children need healing and they need to be heard, what about them? I'm an, I'm not American, I'm indigenous, indigenous. I'm free, I'm me, my motto is, you lie once, you'll lie again, what else is there? That lie is gonna hold you back, Abraham Lincoln, the sixteenth president. My son's favorite president. The fact that my son didn't want to lie and set a good example for what he wanted for himself. I'm showing my firstborn how the schools have affected not only me, but my ancestors, my whole family. I do not believe in God and I do not believe Jesus was ever my king. You cannot force me to believe in something that I know about. I want my children back and I have, I have nothing else to give you guys, I'm done. I brought my dad with me today to help me and support me, cuz I have nothing, I have nothing, he left me with nothing. I'm homeless and I'd rather stay homeless.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want, I don't, not proud of the United States at all. I'm not, and this is for my kids, I'm not, I'm not. Shame on you, these children need help and support. Our next speaker is Caideau with Lee Nguyen on deck.
Let's see what he has to say, I don't remember, but I was so paced. Like I'm, me the whole time I'm talking, I'm like the flag, the flag, that's like, that was like
Good evening everyone.
I had to think long and hard about it and I had to ask. But I'm glad I did.
You are our future, you make us proud and uh I wanna say good luck to all of them. And uh please if any of them is listening, this regard whatever I'm gonna say uh after this to your mayor. I don't mean to rain on your parade or belittle your children or this event that happened uh in the beginning.
So
This is my oral communication session.
I'm glad I did that, I'm glad I went to the Jane Fonda The Jane Fonda uh
Alright, good stuff you guys, uh I, I don't know how many more stunts you guys gonna pull to PR yourself. Try to get uh out of the recall that we, we preparing. Uh like trying to change the name to Vietnamese hero and upset a lot of residents here. I was entrusted by our group of Westminster residents to file a petition for circulation of a recall against you.
My ancestors are not asking like monuments, monuments. My ancestors are asking to clean up after ourselves, our ancestors are saying it's not about us, we were here to help Mother Earth, we were here to learn and to help each other, bro, we weren't here to fucking use and abuse people. So the Vietnamese community, I'm, my, I feel so horrible for them. This is the aftermath of genocide, this is the aftermath of these people are lost. These people have no idea what is happening cuz they are Hollywood, it It's gonna be very hard for them to understand what happened, what just happened to them. I feel that they need to go back home and fix their homeland. And the United States needs to supply that support. We need more farming land here, United States, it, to me it looks like a cow. It didn't look like a uh, it, it didn't look like a, a turtle, to me it looked like a cow. So to me it's like they're milking cow, they're milking it, so farmland, that's all I kept thinking about. The United States can feed the world.
Lee with Jessica.
It can be better and my ancestors are saying it is better, it can be better and it, it is better, it's to them, they already have what we had, what we're trying to fight for, so they have that future and they're telling, they're reporting back to me saying, it's good, it's good. But meanwhile, I have to ride this fucking wave. And I'm sitting next to the, to another resident too. And see to me, and she's Vietnamese, she wants freedom, she's fighting for freedom, she's here because of what's happening in her homeland, that's why she's here, so she can speak out and get support because of what the, what the Americans people did, like I'm hoping that whatever I'm doing, I'm going to I hope she reports back to her homeland. Um, because that needs to be done, um I'm sure she wants to go back home. I'm sure she misses her family. Yeah, like, and to me it's like, well you, you came over here and you tried to get support, like I'm not saying in a mean way. But I'm saying, why can't they visit here on their own term? Exploring. Visiting and then go back home. Like unless they wanna stay. But I guarantee you, not a lot of people they rather go back home. Why can't people just go home? I see that I can't go back home because people are taking that away from me. Where is home if you don't have anyone, where is home? I'm getting confused because the universe and Mother Earth and the spirits are saying, this is it, this is it, this is home. So it's like a bubble, it's like a, yeah, it's like a bubble. And you see the little like things going around it, like the oil. Oil going around it and it makes little designs, that's what it is, that's what I feel like. I was told I'm no longer going to be a human or I don't know how that works, or I'm no longer, yeah, I'm no longer gonna be a human because I did something, um okay, yeah, I'm not gonna die, so it's not a human, um, I'm gonna be like an alien. So, um I'm going to be going with Hermes and then Hermes is gonna drop me off where, um, where, um, these other people have done, the twelve labors. So I'm going to go with the people that have done the twelve labors, um. So therefore I'm not going to, I'll have an opportunity to be someone's spirit guide. Um, my throat is closing up too right now, so to me, I'm gonna stop right now because to me if it's closing up to me, I'm like there's still more information for me to see. Yeah, I'm gonna stop because then I can use that. Anyways, that's what I've been doing for the city meeting and city, yeah, um, so I'm protesting and I'm getting, um I'm getting a lot of dead people support, support from the dead people, support from the afterlife. Um, and this is what my documentary is about because I knew that a lot of people weren't going to believe me, like my mom. Um, I showed her the, um, I, she actually went with me to the city meeting. The, 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 the first time she went to a city meeting was um the, the Jane Fonda thing. Um, that was the first time she went to a city meeting. And she didn't, she's like, oh, she only went for a little bit. I just went to talk and then leave, but I was telling her about it, like those people. Um, she was like, yeah, they don't know what the fuck they're talking about, um. Um, then I showed her the video of the me ripping the flag and she's like, oh, I can't see it, I can't see it. Take it away from me, I'm like, oh my god, like there's people dying right now. They're not being heard. And they're just like I, I don't understand. God and, and this, I don't in school, I remember teacher, they uh, couple times, they would give me attitude or if I don't cross my, uh, put my hand over my heart, I'll stand up, I'll bow my head. Because to me it's a prayer. But it's not under any god. I'll pray with my head down, um, depending on the prayer, if my hands are in the front or the back of me. How I position depending on the prayer, but my head will always be down, I'll always bow down to to what, um to the right. Yeah. And respect the right. You don't bow down to evil. You don't bow down to less, you bow down to greatness. And I don't wanna die with this hate and I'm not gonna bow down to this evilness. I wanna see something great before I, you know, dip out. And if not, I'll figure it out, come back, cuz my dad's still here in this realm. He still comes and goes. He, but he tells me other people can do other things, um, but he don't want, he wants to keep moving. But he's can't move like the way he wants to move because he's attached to me and and that is also a connection that is the ancestors. So, um it's beautiful, I wouldn't want to forgiveness is everything, leaving on good terms, making mens getting that forgiveness, letting whatever you have off your chest so you can just this is what Michael Jackson showed me. He showed me if you are guilty, it's gonna look on you, but if you're like, if you're innocent, you're gonna you're gonna show the world how innocent you are, if those people uh, where are the victims or where, where are the victims at, come, come to me, come to me, like nobody. No. So Hollywood, the government, I'm pissed at the government. What they did. To Michael Jackson, cuz Michael Jackson was a child. In modern day slavery, what they did to Michael Jackson and what they did to Britney Spears. You are, they're female and male and you had a male that grew up to be wanting to be a father. And then the government criticized him about him being a father. I'm blaming the government, I'm putting all this blame on the government cuz they, they're killing these these people with, with, with medicine, with healing powers, they're killing. Like for instance, Taylor Swift, she is a healer. And the government like so I hope the children around the world, what she's doing is, is pure fucking amazing to me and like with her presence and her just whatever. It was like, um they putting all the celebrities into one and just swiftly let's get this done and over with. So and Taylor goes for both boy or, boy orphina and the last name Swift, so I'm like, oh, this is so cool. So Taylor is gonna swiftly take us away and then Britney Spears is going to perform the act or, or show us, she's gonna get, she's, she's gonna give us a show and then that's where Beyonce and, and, and the Kardashian comes in. Yeah, cuz uh I was already warned about this, someone told me about Kanye West when I was in high school. He got Hermes. And apparently if he's talking to Elon, so that means Tesla is with him. And I'm not sure if he knows if Tesla is actually like communicating with him or not, but Tesla has been communicating with with Kanye West. Um that is so neat how certain people will just give you a dream and be like Einstein comes on right, eh, Einstein, Albert Einstein just popped up right now. He was into his work. But he understands importance of family. I chose family, he chose work. The, yeah, the, the stuff, the thing's already been there, it's it's there, why are women having such a hard fucking time keeping a fucking family, I don't understand, he did all that. So he's backing up women. He's supporting women and women's rights and women's beliefs. The grandfather time is like really there. My dad, I just, I wish I would have known my dad like this alive. Cuz I think that would have been neat. But at least I'm blessed to have this, so it could be worse, I couldn't have this and I wouldn't be able to, I'd be like I wouldn't know what to do, I think I'd be more hating myself maybe or I know it could be a lot worse. Because I didn't, I, I don't, I wouldn't have this gift to like get my information to keep moving forward. To understand that these people are only doing or only talking their bullshit is because uh they're bullshit. They don't like themselves, so they're gonna make everybody else, um, miserable. So I haven't gone to the city meetings, like I said, in a while. And I think even that time, the June twenty eighth, um, yeah, I had gotten hit by a car cuz I'm like why am I limping, I am limping, cuz um I got hit by the car in May. May twenty fourth. And um anyways, that was June twenty eighth. But um, you know, we're sitting next to, um to another uh resident there. And she's, she has American flag, she's Trump and everything and to me, um what's funny is though they're giving me a big feeling like she's going to see Trump or she wants to see Trump or she wants like with the name like that and where I came from in Riverside, the bridge, she's the bridge. I'm like my ancestors are so funny. But I, I do feel like I don't know, the city council members are two-faced, they're not supposed to be there. Um, they do need to go back home and I do hope their homeland charges them with the toughest. And I hope that they do get punishment here as well, but I know that their homeland will, um will give them what they deserve, a spanking that they deserve because they came over here to do what? And um my ancestors said that they did it to intend to get back, to pay back a revenge. But their ancestors are also telling them revenge, revenge is not gonna get you anywhere right now, they were warned because this is a sacred land. And I'm not returning what they're doing to me. So I'm very heavily protected and I'm still don't want anyone to die, I really don't. Especially dying with hate. Why should anyone die with hate? Or die knowing that they're not hurt, that is painful. So I go into that mindset and I think back of all those children, all those kids that had been taken away from their families. Oh, how do you, how do you even go on like that? You need my ancestors, my, my voice, my, my offsprings. I beg you to go to the reservation. I beg you to go and see for yourself what the American, what the government has done. Cuz it was never like that. And to see that there's alcohol, suicide, drugs. Native American babies, they were born with a lot more spirits around them. A lot more evil entities. Like people of the Freemasons, Luminaries, they don't want these native babies to grow up healthy so they will get they will attach their negative entities, like these terror readers and other witches. So they will like attack these babies. And the parents are too, these, these Native Americans, the parents are too drugged out to, to protect their child, children because they're all alcoholic, not all of them, I'm saying no, no, but I'm talking only the ones that have the, the trauma, the the abuse that were neglected on, on the reservation. Majority. Ask so many questions. Write down questions before you, like before and after, think of something, think but um always leave something that, that will benefit, like a time capsule. There is a meeting, there's been meetings, like who comes to talk about Westminster, there's even, there's meetings here and I see nobody in those, in those meetings. CEO of Westminster is huge and no one goes to those meetings. And if they do, they all know each other, those people all know each other. That's how I learned on the Who, when I got that experience. Making agendas, um, talking to people, okay, this is what we're gonna do, this is the plan, um we're going to um go and pick up trash, um at this park, at this location, I already called the park. You know, like whoever was running the park and it was usually, it was um the Family Resource Center, it was like Gina, it was Gina, yeah, not sure of her last name, but the resource. We would talk to her, we would even have meetings at the resource center, um uh, I would call her around to get, to see if we would have people come and talk to us about um what kind of resources we can get. So then it started, I started, I needed help because my son was touched, his cousin touched him. And those kids needed help too, no one would help me, everyone wanted to shut me up, the school, the principal was involved. The principal should have never have kids in their house. I don't care if you are best friends with that parent. The fact that you are so fucking close with Veronica Tapia. The fact that you are so fucking close with Veronica Tapia. And you are a principal. I think it was at Freiburger, this is a Freiburger um principal. Hey Alexa, who is the principal at Freiburger Elementary School in Westminster?
From this dot org, Mathieu Abachon is principal of Westminster Elementary School in Westminster, Colorado.
Hey Alexa, who is the principal in um elementary school Freiburger in Westminster, California?
From F dot link, Clayton Ross is the superintendent and also the principal of the elementary school.
No, I don't think this. Anyways, it was a female. And uh. Something happened where Vettel, baby Vettel went to the principal's house and the dad's like. The mommy there dropped her off, I don't know what happened and they're like, well, where where, they came to the house without Vettel. And they're like, baby Vettel, and they're like, well, where's baby Vettel, I don't know, we have to pick her up, where where she at as a principal, where the principal's house at, I don't know. They couldn't find her, they had to find. The address. You gotta, you gotta grandmother telling where where's this, where's your daughter at and they're trying to, they're trying to be like, well. We don't know, she's at the principal's house, but we gotta find out where the house is at, it just me listening to that conversation. I. I didn't know what to say, who do I go to, who do I go recall um. Because Vettel was, baby Vettel was in the, she was put placed in a facility. Because she said that um, she told her cousin and I and I, she told somebody else that her dad was. Doing stuff to her. And then later on, they convinced it was she can't, she got it from a book. Well, everyone in the family was lying, what was going on, even the grandmother. I am against pedophiles, I do not support pedophiles. It's like uh Leslie Nielsen or that guy. Liam. Liam Nelson does it, yeah, some, I'll find you. Something like that. I'm finding you and I'm calling you out, I'm calling the the council out. You can't be this stupid, the city council can't be this stupid, what are you doing with all that money, where is the money going? You're using children, Anaheim is also using children, shut down Disneyland. That's an order, that's funny, Walt Disney. Is not going to have this happen anymore. So if anything, he's pushing Britney Spears to the max and. An Apollo hazard, so that is beautiful. That is beautiful. Seeing that um. Yeah, Hermes just shows me a lot of things that is just um. You really do feel bad for the Kardashians, I do. Because if their father was still alive, none of this. And her dad's calling her, so. It just makes me miss my dad unborn, I'm like. It was never the case, it was never like that. When she talks about her dad, it's like, I want that relationship, I would want that relationship. At least I have the relationship that I was asking for for my dad, I have it now, so. That is beautiful, so. Anyone who is struggling with with um. Trying to make peace on the other side um. That can take a lifetime. But it can take a lifetime. That it can look like a circus, like. Who do you want in your circus, you gotta be the ringleader, you gotta like come in. So every day the party. And in the circus. It's family. Teamwork. That's so cool. And I love elephants, I really do love elephants. So my Colin. A ranger, chief. Spirit baby, animals. Animal, they're gonna come to you a lot. Cause you have that healing. So. Be prepared to be alone, but be prepared to know that you're not alone, that when you are alone. You are more. Uh surrounded by uh spirits and uh they're getting, they're getting you ready, the reason why you're alone is because they're getting you ready for. The next best thing, the next, the bigger thing that that. That the other part was too crowded, the other part you couldn't use anymore, they wouldn't let you celebrate what's coming next. So those people that you had to let go. They weren't gonna let you celebrate the next life. They'd be too jealous, if they're jealous of you now, they're going to be jealous of you afterlife. So you just have to stop them in their tracks and, uh, gotta turn around, no. What are you doing, stop it, I don't like it. Did I say it was okay for you to hurt my feelings, no. Turn around and go away and then you do the same. And then um. What I like the most, what I like is um. When I have done that. The person that I'll be like, oh. I got an image of them, they're thinking about me, so they're they're trying to get me back into their lives and then all of a sudden I'll see them. Really, didn't I tell you? Don't even think about me, then we wouldn't have this problem. What has been helping me a little bit, wh- what I thought. Latina Fey commercials. It's in my ears, like, oh, you have a vacation, all of a sudden it comes on, I'm like, oh, yeah, funny. And all I think about it is, all I think about when I hear those commercials, I think of, all I can see is my house from here. So that is just like. It's a joke, it's a joke. Yeah, that's so cool, I love you boys.